All right, sir, let's go ahead and acknowledge the missing members, I guess. Frank called in, he wasn't gonna make it. Ms. Cranberry usually here by now, but he is... That was... With that said...
Can you hear me wrong?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
For some reason, I can't get my... Voice on here.
Um...
It does start video.
Stop video.
Yeah. Not even seeing it, actually.
It's kind of at the bottom.
On the left-hand side, down at the bottom.
I wish you all would make us a grin on the big television screen. Like, when I'm talking, you don't just see me, you still see, like, all four squares. But hey, I'm just being silly.
You kind of fill up the whole wall, Lindsay.
Larger than...
I have... I'm gone.
Are we good to go?
Yes, sir.
If you would please read us an invitation.
I will. Everybody could stand and pray. You would bow with me and let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, Lord, so thankful for this blessed day that you've given us. Thank you for the health and all the liberties that you've provided for us. We ask that as we enter into this meeting tonight, Father, that the discussion be for the benefit of the citizens of Mount Pleasant, all present, and the community here in Mount Pleasant. We give you thanks and praise and ask all these things in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Corey, would you please read some of the complaints?
The United States of America, the Republic of...
That is so hard to get over. All right.
And the minutes were delivered to everybody's mailbox. Um, if there aren't any errors or changes, we have a motion to approve them.
Do we give a minute?
Well...
This is not the meeting, this is just the...
They were included by your agenda.
I apologize. So they...
It's a meeting, yeah.
Yeah. The minutes were included on the agenda simply because that's the template that I use.
I'm good with you.
But tonight...
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good. Yeah, look at that alert. Thank you, ma'am. So this is our public meeting, like, all of them are open, but our public meeting for the guidelines.
Public hearing, maybe they wanted to comment on...
Anybody want to comment on what has been sent out for review, comment, and what have you?
Let me go get the signing.
Do we have anybody from the city public or citizens?
I'm actually going to count the signing sheet right now. There's nobody present right now, but I'll verify that.
Okay.
Wanted you to sign up on that and give anything you need to say. We do not have anybody who has signed up to comment. Mr.?
Let the minister reflect that Ms. Cranberry is present as well.
Only one that's missing is Frank.
That's correct, yes.
The minutes show that no one's here. Did anyone hear any comments from citizens?
Did anybody on video hear any comments from any citizens in regards to the design guidelines?
I didn't.
Did not? No.
Fortunately, this is how much our public hearings go.
But our biggest complaint is they're still not being notified. And they don't know about them. That's what I hear into after...
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, we don't vote on this tonight, right? We vote on it at a regular meeting in our next meeting.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Um, Ms. Joe, Ms. Blutsoe did indicate that since nobody's present for the public hearing, this can be used as a study session of sorts if any discussion needs to be held on the design guidelines from the board or anybody present in regards to what was delivered in the packets.
That design line, uh, guys, I feel good, Robert. Thank you for doing that, appreciate it.
Yeah, I think that was very good.
Thank you. Thank you both. Um... Yes, we can?
So today, Robert and Kate and I, I don't know where y'all can see me, I'm not sure where the video is.
Yeah, we're right.
All right.
Stand apart.
Gotcha. Um, so today, we started talking about parking for downtown businesses. And I know there's been some discussion, maybe from some of y'all or with Kate, about letting the historic guidelines dictate parking for downtown. And after talking about this with Robert and Kate and Robert talking to Will, we really just don't think the historic zoning guidelines is the place to regulate downtown parking. The reasons for that is, Ms. Cranberry can probably speak to this, but when the planning commission was, in 2018, going over the entire zoning ordinance, they put a lot of time into parking. And there's parking regulations for each different zone and also for each different type of use. And they even took into consideration that there's limited parking downtown and made sure that some of the parking spaces, the on-street parking, was available to downtown businesses as well. So if that's a concern that this commission has, I think they can use that to talk with the planning commission, to make a recommendation to the city commission, rather than having this commission try to come in and make a change to the zoning, or to the historic zoning guidelines. Sorry, I always mix those up, but, um, I don't know if y'all had concerns about that, but if you wanted to talk about that, I think that would be a good time while at the public meeting.
That was one of the...
I'll speak, Corey, I'll speak to that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, what happened was, um, I was speaking, I was talking to Veritas guitars, and we were talking about them putting in a showroom in front of their building, which I think would be really good for downtown, um, someplace that we could send people in, they could do some tours, watch them actually making guitars and stuff like that, and that's what they have in mind. Uh, one of their concerns is that they were told that they had to have 20 parking spots. And there is just not 20 parking spots that you can set aside for a business downtown. So, um, and nobody else has that. So we just wanted to clarify that. I didn't think, I wasn't saying that it needed to go into the historic, you know, design guidelines in the overlay to it. I just don't think that businesses downtown should have to meet that requirement. Now, I don't know where that is, and if it's in the zoning, um, and, you know, I understand that, but if it's in there for downtown buildings, I think that that needs to be addressed.
And I think Robert can speak to that and Ms. Cranberry too, but it is in the zoning, the regular zoning ordinance, and that's something that those concerns can be brought to them, and we've talked about different ways that the city can address that. And they would go through the zoning, uh, through the planning commission, would make a recommendation to the city, and we would do it like any other zoning regulation. So I think that's something that can be addressed, and I'll let Robert talk about it, but just wanted to make sure that that's not what this commission is trying to do. That's something that would be specific to the planning commission. Okay?
Thank you. Uh, just to follow up, Donna, with the question that is at hand, okay, so, yes, we have worked with Veritas, we're still continuing to work with them. They're, I think, a little ways off in regards to opening up the retail side, which is gonna be a small percentage on our initial conversation, which will be a small percentage of the building square footage. The retail side is really the only particular portion of that square footage that would be regulated under our parking requirements. The parking requirements for that particular location, retail, taking into account that the instant use of that retail versus their manufacturing side, um, it's far less than 20 parking spots, for sure, that would be required. It's generally what we try to look at, and I'll be upfront with everybody here, the parking requirements, it's the use that dictates the parking. So if you have a retail use, take into account the square footage of that retail use, and then you provide calculations for your parking requirements. That's what's done in our site plan review typically when it goes for the planning commission. So, um, just a good example, prime example now would be Hamilton Building, uh, that's currently under renovation right now, uh, with additional parking over behind the grill. That's a downtown, that's a downtown building. There's gonna be a mixed-use development, uh, in that particular location, Hamilton Building, six loft apartments upstairs, market hill on the lower level, square footage. Um, the, our parking requirements dictate that if you have a residential dwelling above, then you've got to have a lot, allotted space for residential parking on-site. It can't be off-site, it can't be on the street, it can't be anywhere but on-site. They've had to make, uh, significant, uh, preparation to accommodate six parking spots on that particular site. Now, because it's a mixed-use, uh, the lower level, uh, we have to take into account the parking requirements for that use, not the loft apartments, but that use in particular. So, that being said, the reason the, um, parking lot behind the grill, which is under same ownership or akin to same ownership, uh, that's gonna be renovated as well, and it's gonna be made a parking lot, it's gonna come to our criteria as far as, um, surfacing, landscaping, so on and so forth, but that's to accommodate the parking for the market hill section. Uh, and that's the way zoning looks at all different uses, uh, particularly speaking to the CDT or downtown zone, uh, we did take into account the limited amount of parking, uh, which we have available. And as a caveat, when we were doing our zoning ordinance, if you remember correctly, we added that a percentage of required parking, um, can be accommodated by on-street parking. Now, also during our zoning ordinance, uh, discussion was had about the ample parking that we have available as public park, which is underutilized. Uh, it's, uh, in my opinion, it's not promoted as public parking. And I think we have, we took that into consideration when we was doing the zoning, uh, but we didn't delve too much into that parking portion. We did show the outlying public parking designations, but we didn't take it any further. So, uh, my suggestion, uh, as far as my office is concerned, uh, from speaking with Will, our contract planner as well, because we've talked about this several times, even back in 2018, uh, is to... For future, start preparing to utilize the ample public parking that we have. Now, in order to do that, improvement's gonna have to take place. You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to recap, you know, the parking lot over here, you're gonna have to re-market and sign it, put signs out to identify it as public parking. Uh, if you look at this parking lot over here, it's got an ingress and an egress, um, but nobody uses it because nobody really knows about it. Um, but under our current situation, uh, because that takes a little preparation and it has to go through the city commission recommendations from, uh, what we would recommend, recommendation, a joint recommendation from not only the planning commission, but the historic commission, and possibly even Chamber of Commerce or, um, Community Development as a joint recommendation to the city commission, uh, for, you know, um, them to take into account our concerns and maybe have the opportunity at that point to set aside funding for improvements to promote those, uh, public parks. And then, after that is accomplished, go back to the zoning ordinance and reflect, uh, however we have to do that legally, reflect those changes to accommodate our downtown district, which is our historic district, uh, by, you know, indicating that, you know, for example, you as a business owner, you have possibly, as far as required parking goes, you have possibly one parking spot in front of your business, uh, but we do have adequate, uh, public parking that's available to your businesses. Um, without taking out a large portion of our parking requirements, you're not going to be able to accommodate that in any other form or fashion, I don't believe. Um, but it has been thought about, it's been talked about, it's been, we had multiple study sessions, uh, when we were updating our zoning ordinance, uh, and, and many of those parking was discussed at length. Uh, so we got an opportunity here, but under the current conditions, we work with local businesses in order to accommodate. I make sure that everybody that comes into our downtown area, which is our historic, which could possibly be our historic overlay, uh, understands that there are parking requirements, but we do have public parking available. So they know that upfront. Um, and I don't think there's been a time that I've missed conveying that to any prospective business owner. So, right now, we have to work with what we got, but in the future, I think, uh, to provide better accommodations, more business-friendly, we open up and improve the parking areas, the assets that we have for downtown, because they are so underutilized. Um, as you all know, our streets, street parking stays packed. Why? I mean, in reality, it shouldn't, and most of these businesses down here are in and out. They're not, uh, assembly-type establishments. They're more or less, you go in, you get a cup of coffee, you go in and get a baked donut. Uh, an example, Veritas, you go in, small retail space, he's got some things with his business for sale, might even have a guided tour at one point down the line, but I think, um, for the most part, we are accommodating as far as parking requirements goes, but we still need to amend that document. But prior to amending that document, the zoning text, I think we really need to send forth a recommendation from all parties involved, all boards involved, to the city commission, you know, letting know our concerns for the parking areas.
Yeah. So what you're saying, so what you're saying is that we don't need to, uh, change the, um, parking, uh, zoning at all, correct?
No, ma'am, that's not what I'm saying. Uh, you changed, you changed the parking in the zoning as an amendment, but first you offer the availability of parking. And the only way to offer the availability of parking is to send forth a recommendation to the city commission on the parking concerns to, hopefully, at that point, minor improvements could be made to our parking, uh, to suffice, and then we just go back and we draft an ordinance, amending that particular section for downtown, and that would accommodate any small business in our historic overlay.
Yeah, Robert, if I can say something too. So we've got the city parking lot here that we have with old police cars that are being surplus, we can get those off that lot, we can get the tow motor off that lot, those things can go other places, we can stripe it, we can make the lot look better and more inviting, we can do the same thing with the lot behind, um, like, Hensworth, it's a mini lot. And I didn't learn until today that the First Farmers lot is, we've got like a hundred-year lease or something like that for it, for parking there. So we have parking, we don't have signage, we don't have things, and those parking spots can definitely be available to people that are visiting these businesses.
That was, that's what I was getting at, it's saying nobody actually uses the parking lot that we got the lease on, and the reason why we originally got that lease was because of, um...
Courtroom.
The courtroom being up here. But the courtroom's not up here now, so that parking lot is just over there, but it's still, the city still has the lease on it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's still, right now, that's the city parking lot, but nobody, never nobody parks over there. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Everybody thinks of the police lot, for sure, or City Mall lot, I agree.
Right.
No, I mean, the one across there and the signage is there.
She's talking about the one next to First Farmers.
Yeah, that's, that's the city lot, too.
So that we could do some...
Yeah, we definitely need some ways of finding signs downtown, but I was thinking that we would probably do those after we finish the downtown streetscape and include those as part of it, um, which makes sense, we have to, you know, um... I, I would hate to start putting signs up and having them have to come down when we do those, uh...
Yeah, we're not ready to do this, we're just talking about this would be the plan.
Yeah, we're just saying that there is parking available, it's just, you know, everybody just can't be in front of the stores, because that was the big issue that we had when the courthouse was up here. Everybody was taking up the store parking and thus, when we was working on the codebook and we was redoing everything so that they could, you know, the store staff could do that.
And we're getting ready to have some new businesses going in there, uh, next to, um, the bank, uh, Reliant Bank and those businesses. So, um, I guess my question is, you know, I mean, I, I'm the one that brought this up because I was, I happened to, well, actually, Casey Marvin came in my office and we were talking, and I asked him, uh, you know, when are you, when are you, do you think you're gonna have your showroom, and he goes, "Well, I don't know that we're gonna be able to do it." And he's the one that told me that, he was told that he needed 20 parking spaces. So that's where that came from, and I don't know where he got that, or I don't know why he was under that assumption, but, um, I, I mean, I know how important it is for them to have a showroom, it's something that we can send people to, we can use it to attract people downtown, it's something that most small cities don't have. Um, so that's why, was my concern on why, you know, he thought that they weren't gonna be able to have a showroom. But Kate and I went over, talked to him today, everything's okay, um, as long as, um, so I guess my question is, when the, um, where the, oh, what is that, the, um, the flooring company, when they, when they open a business there, how do you tell them, because there's no place, they're in the middle, how do you tell them they have to have so many parking spots?
It sounds like, Robert, you're saying after review, what available parking is public, then we recommend, make a recommendation to amend the parking guidelines, you know, via chamber, CDC, HDC, whoever else involved, and then we just make an amendment?
You would actually make a recommendation to the city commission, because the city commission is gonna, they would be expending any funds for the city, um, but I, I think, yes, in some form...
What kind of timeline do we need to do that since we have new businesses coming in?
I mean, there's no timeline, we work with what we've got right now. Um, I, you know, sooner than later, uh, that's always been my hope for utilization of these parking lots that we have, uh, but I've been here five years and, uh...
We just don't want to deter anybody, like, you know, like Veritas thought they had to do 20, and then the floor company, even though they've had parking, they're moving, they need more, so they're not grandfathered in, but I know that's the wrong term, but...
Well, Veritas has put the cart before the horse, because, uh, in reality, they're not to a point to do anything to that building, uh, other than what they've already been told that they could do. Um, and according to speaking with Casey, I believe is his name, on several occasions, myself and chief grooms, we know their operation and we know exactly what they want to do, or what they've told us at least, um, and we are accommodating to their, uh, needs at this time, as we would in the future. But if you're talking about assembling 100 people, or 50 people, or 25 people to walk through in a guided tour, then you're gonna have to have parking for them, where you get the parking. Yeah, but I mean, I was just explaining to you, explaining to everybody what the, what Veritas, I mean, I realize Veritas is a very important asset to our community as any other business for that matter, but...
I don't think you had the conversation with them about parking yet.
No, because we're not to that point. I mean, it was mentioned early on in the, in the scope of things, but we're not, we're not to the point where we're even reviewing...
We had the lot, we had this conversation.
Yeah, yeah, most certain. Uh, and we did, that was mentioned on the onset of the conversation, the first conversation that we ever had. Yeah, there's parking requirements, but we do have public parking available. Uh, so he knew that in advance.
I think that...
Well, and like Corey said, this isn't, um, you know, for our committee to decide, we're just trying to get some clarification.
Yeah, I think what, that was, I gotta fall off on a tangent, but that, the whole point of this was just to say that parking will not, I don't think parking should be something that the historic zoning commission tries to regulate through the historic zoning guidelines. But if that is a concern of the historic zoning commission, you can make a recommendation to the city to open up more public parking, or to make it more clear, or to the planning commission to amend their zoning, uh, ordinance. So basically, we're just making you aware of problem and how the city could address it, so that if the commission later on wants to make that recommendation, then you can, out of voting, publicly noted. But there's nothing for you to do today because it's not in the historic zoning guidelines, and that is the way it needs to be.
And just, since there's no one here, it's a great opportunity to talk about it.
Right, yeah.
But I mean, that's, that's all I have on it. I, I know that our planning commission worked tirelessly, and public notice after public notice after public notice, meetings, 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 public meetings, um, and it was a concern then, as it is a concern now. Uh, so we were well aware of it in advance, uh, it just, uh...
Well, we do have more parking now than we did since the courthouse is at a different location. That was a big plus for downtown.
Yes.
Okay, whatever, yeah.
And I think arrangements can be made to...
And that was one of the reasons why that, when we voted on that location, is why we went to move it from up here to down there, where that it did not interfere with the businesses and what we were trying to bring in.
I think the amendment to the zoning ordinance would reflect, uh, and we haven't worried that at all yet, but it could reflect that we have parking available to the public that businesses can utilize, uh, you know, for their, for their operations.
We're at the beginning of, beginning stages of thinking through how to amend that, if that's the recommendation of all the boards and the planning commission.
Yes, yes. And this will be discussed, just so the historic board knows, I can discuss this at our board meeting that'll be coming up, not only the agenda, but it can be at least brought up. I think it, uh, staff comments.
April's meeting.
April's meeting, so. I'll make sure that it's, you know, at, at least brought up by my office, the concerns, and, and get their feelings on it a, at that point. And then maybe jointly, boards working together simultaneously can make a recommendation to either the city commission or the planning commission. But the plant, but the city commission would be the one to have to expend any funds to improve, to make any improvements.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things. We're talking about improving the lots that are owned by the city, which is the city commission decision. And we're talking about potentially later on amending the zoning, which is a recommendation from the planning commission to the city. So that, we've gotten all convoluted, but that, all of these boards and commissions are working together for the same goal.
Any other items for discussion?
I don't have any, staff don't have any.
Anybody on Zoom have any other items they want to put on the table? So we can just get a motion adjourned and move on.
It's all you, Don.
Yeah, I think it's you, Don.
Yeah.
If there is no additional discussion, make a recommendation that we adjourn.
Yeah, a motion from Mr. Donalds to adjourn in a second from Jackie. Yeah, all in favor?
Bye.
Very good.
Bye, everybody.